Councilmember Hilton will be absent tonight. He did let us know that in advance.
Oh, I, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Also Fred or Peter?
All right, well.
As I see four, which is a.
Right, we have a forum, so, okay, I, I see we are live on Facebook. Is it okay for me to actually begin?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to call to order this study session for May 10th, and start by reading my usual, "All council members are participating remotely pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order Number N 2920 in order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus. The meeting is being livestreamed from the city website, cityofgillroy.org, and is viewable on Cable Channel 17 and Facebook Live. Public comments can be made during the meeting by watching the meeting online and calling or logging into Zoom at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash RB dot G Y forward slash D J Y R U C and enter passcode 254315. When I call for public comment, press star nine on your telephone keypad or use the raise your hand icon." Okay, the study session is for the purpose of Garlic Farm RV Park at 5878 Garlic Farm Way. Overview and presentation. We have a staff report by Cindy McCormick.
While she's doing that, for the record, we should just say that at the moment, we have five council members or four council members plus the mayor. I see Councilmember LaRoma Yost is here. I do not see Councilmember Tovar, if he's, I'm not sure if he's here or not.
Okay, if he is here, it'd be visible by a phone number.
Christina Ruiz should call Roll for the meeting.
Yes, that would be helpful.
I don't even, okay, Roll call please.
Councilmember Armandares.
Present.
Councilmember Barco.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoma Yost.
Present.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar. Absent. And Mayor Blankley.
Here, thank you.
And Councilmember Hilton is noted as absent as previously stated.
Are we ready?
Yes, please.
Okay, tonight, I'm going to provide you with a quick overview of why we are here this evening and then turn it over to Harmony Communities to introduce themselves and answer any questions that you may have. You can see here the, on the map, the Gilroy Garlic Farms RV Park is located in the southern end of the city, just south of the Monterey Road exit off of Highway 101. A little bit of permit history, Garlic Farms RV Park received a planned unit development permit in 2000 for the RV park and various commercial uses, and a conditional use permit, which include a number of conditions, including a limitation to 160 RV stalls and a 60-day maximum stay over 120-day period. Also important to note is we do have a ongoing Gilroy Plan Policy restricting residential uses east of 101. In January, staff became aware of new ownership of the Garlic Farms RV Park. There was a newspaper article in the Mercury News advertising tiny homes at that property. So we followed that article with a phone call to Harmony Communities, just introducing ourselves, and then followed that up with two letters, which included the conditional use permit and all the conditions of approval. And since that time, we've had ongoing communications with Harmony Communities. As part of that conversation, we have asked for some additional information that is needed to listen to their request for an exemption to the maximum stay. Here are some photos of the tiny homes that were taken out of the RV park. And now I would like to turn it over to Matt Davies and Chris Chapman from Harmony Communities. Matt, just let me know when you would like me to advance the slide.
You can just advance them every little bit. That's okay. They're not really a portion of the slide. And, you know, we can just go through them now. You guys, I just wanted to give you an overview of what the RV park currently looks like. You can keep flipping through, just. And then we're moving on to what a tiny home slash RV looks like. The interior and the exterior. So, a little bit about ourselves, Harmony Communities. It's a company that was started by myself and my father. It's run with my mother and my wife. Family company. What we do is affordable housing in California. We run and operate mobile home and RV parks. I was born and raised in Stockton. I did live in Santa Clara for a number of years, so it's kind of been exciting, actually, to get back out there and spend so much time back in, in Santa Clara County. So you gotta look at the picture of the park and whatnot. But I think the important thing, Harmony Communities, we're, we've been doing this for about 20 years now. It's, we've been upgrading RV parks and mobile home parks and providing affordable housing for about 20 years. We do, it's important to note, provide an affordable housing for local residents. We've actually been pretty excited, when we came into Garlic Farm, we were very excited at the opportunity to upgrade it and bring it back to some of its former glory and continue to improve the community around it. The park is in good condition now. We're making substantial improvements. As you guys have read, the solar, we're putting about a million and a half dollars to make this park one of the few green parks in the county. We are redoing the roadways. We're going, we're doing a majority of capital improvements to continue to provide clean, affordable, safe housing for everybody. Many, it's, this idea of the conditional use permit was very surprising to us. In 2001, when the park was built, state law was different. State law changed in 2004 approximately and allowed for longer terms of stay. We did not know about the conditional use permit when we took over the park. In fact, for the prior 10 to 15 years, the past two owners have been operating this park pretty much exclusively as long-term housing. So the idea that when Harmony Communities came in and is looking to change this 60-day rule, that's not the case. I think we're here today to formalize what has been in place for the last 10 or 15 years. We have about 150 families that currently live in the park that have lived there on average for five years or more. Not dissimilar from Garlic USA, which is 90% long-term housing as well. So I, I think that Chris Chapman will have a chance to go over it and walk through the changes the state made and go through the legalities of it. But, like I said, we weren't changing anything that we came in or upsetting the apple cart. This idea of tiny homes, they sound splashy. They sound fun. They sound exciting, but really what they are are just RVs. It's not changing anything. They don't look like your typical RVs, but they are deemed RVs by the state, by DMV. They're licensed by the DMV. They go up and down the freeway, just like an RV. So as our tenant base slowly turns over, the idea was to continue to upgrade the level, the quality of RVs within our park. We're certainly not asking anyone to leave. Whoever's been moved in, in our view, is welcome to stay as long as they want. And we're hoping that you folks won't penalize us based on two sets of prior ownership's failure to request the exemption, the state, the exemption the state allows for from the length of stay. And that's why we're here today, is just to go over the state law and talk about the exemption. I understand, again, we were put on your radar because of the tiny homes, but like I said, they're really just, they're just a really nice RV. Just, they look good. I think you saw them. They're much more conducive to people who are living in RVs across the state. I believe the residents, the city's concern is that the residents who stay more than 60 days may be something the city views as possibly violating the cup. Once we had understood the issue after taking over and had a chance to work through it, we did, you know, for the first time in 15 years, as we understand it, formally make this exemption request since the prior ownership, it appears, has never been, has been operating like the exemption was in place, but has not, I guess, did not formally request it. Again, I think that the situation isn't unique to us while we're having this discussion about the exemption. I did ask city staff if they wanted to have Garlic USA join us, since I believe they should be in the same place, we were in the same place, and if you're talking about an exemption for us, you know, we should be talking about an exemption. They probably, you probably want to have exemption discussions with them. There's one thing that I would note, bear with me, I'm going through my notes. Question seven on page eight of the agenda packet, it references the other RV parks and it talks about demand. We have zero demand in our RV park for overnight stays. We don't have any requests. I understand that Garlic USA keeps 10% of their sites open for overnight only, and they've been talking for the last year, since before COVID, about ending that, since there's such little demand, especially as compared to the long-term stays. So the evidence on the ground is that there is not a demand for overnight, and the most pressing issue for this land and its use is to continue providing that housing to your, that affordable housing to your lower-income residents. Typically, we serve people in the 30 to 50% AMI. And I know that you folks are very familiar with, you know, with the AMI. I think the median household income in this area is now close to $150,000. We are serving people, like a family of four, with house, with incomes under about $50,000. So we're really focused on that area where it's most needed. That's our specialty. And that's where jurisdictions are struggling the most to provide that housing. We have started a dialogue with city staff, explaining our position that we, that we believe our long-term residents are exempt under the cup, and that we have asked for a meeting with city planning about their concerns. We do hope to have further engagement and have a meeting in the near future. Our goal, we, we're not here to be in opposition with anybody in the slightest. We're here to work with you, work with everybody to meet these goals. So we're here to improve the park, improve the surrounding community. That's our goal. I'd like to turn this over to my counsel, Chris Chapman, and let him walk through a few things that, so I don't butcher them. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I echo Matt's comments, and we appreciate your time and attention today. We're shocked that you guys weren't aware of what was going on at the park, so we're happy to discuss it and try to educate everyone and work together to a common goal. I wanted to just remind everyone that this, you know, the state of California is in the middle of a housing crisis. As part of that crisis, there's little available affordable housing. Believe it or not, RVs are becoming more commonplace for residents, such as Garlic Farms, to seek that permanent housing, and it's happening all over the country, frankly, but it's becoming more and more common here because of the housing problems. These tiny home RVs are in high demand just for that reason. The California Legislature recognized the housing crisis not too long ago when it passed the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. That became law on January 1st of 2020. That piece of legislation encourages more affordable housing and prohibits local governments, such as City of Gilroy, from reducing those number of housing opportunities for the public at large. So just make sure you're aware of that. Similarly, Government Code 12955, little L, also became effective on January 1st, 2020. And that section, you know, prohibits the local government from using its zoning laws as, or denials of applications, such as an exemption that Garlic Farms is requesting, that discriminates against housing opportunities for the public at large. So there's been a couple pieces of legislation recently that have teeth. And I don't say this to scare anybody, but the state's taking a, you know, taking this seriously, and it's, it knows local. A lot of cities don't want the affordable housing, and maybe what the element tended to bring, but what Matt's doing is actually supporting the community, and so we want to make sure everyone's aware of that. Hopefully, everyone supports that. What's important, too, is both of these pieces of legislation are consistent with the Health and Safety Code 18865.2, which has been operative since January 1st, 2002. I think Matt said 2004, but it's actually 2002. Mr. Faber cites to that in the agenda. I'm sure all of you have read it. It's kind of hard to read, slow, confusing. I'll admit to you. But basically, it says, "Look, if an RV park has residents that want to stay there long-term, you city have to allow it unless you can meet a certain burden." Otherwise, and it's a very high burden. And I can confess to you, I have clients in Santa Clara County that, you know, I've had this issue with Santa Clara County, and if you speak to Santa Clara County, they'll tell you, if a park owner like Matt applies, they really can't do anything about it, because they can't meet that burden to overcome what the state wants RV park going to do, if there's a demand for it. So with that said, you know, we're hopeful that the city will work with Garlic Farms and Matt in an effort to support the affordable housing, help keep the status quo, keep these families in these homes. Believe it or not, you need these people. They support your businesses. Some of your cooks, your cleaners are very good people, so you need them and you want them. The state is basically telling you, don't kick them out. So we're hopeful we can keep the dialogue open, and we're happy to answer questions about the park and how we can work together to help the community about this exemption that Garlic Farms has applied for. Thank you.
Chris, a couple other things, too. About a quarter of our residents work for Christopher Ranch, full-time. So, and again, I, I don't, it's important to me that, that you as a council understand, we're not coming in here, again, I didn't, I had no clue about this conditional use permit. We're here purely to formalize what's been going on with or without everyone, you know, maybe, maybe knowing, maybe not, maybe, you know, sort of turning a blind eye, but what's been going on within the city for the last 10 or 15 years. And so we don't want to end up in a situation where there's a discussion about evicting 300 families out of the City of Gilroy, 300 low-income families. I mean, I, I don't even know how that would go about, but that's what we'd be talking about. If we, if we don't end up having this exemption and we end up, wherever that goes, we're talking about 300 evictions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we have several council members with questions. I want to say for the public that at issue here is not whether houses are affordable or not affordable, or people having to, who are currently there having to leave. At issue here tonight is that the City of Gilroy does not allow in our general plan for housing developments of any kind east of 101. And that, if you didn't know, when you purchased the land, might have been something to, to be aware of. But that's the issue, is housing developments east of 101. That's what you are talking about with this exemption. So that part being said, I believe I saw Councilmember Armandares's hand first, then Councilmember Dion, then Councilmember Marks. So I will go take questions in that order.
Okay, first, we're not looking to become a residential housing. We're looking to just run an RV park like they're run across the rest of the state.
But with an, with no, right. I understand that. Those are the words you are using. I, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Armandares.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt and Chris. Let's see, I have a few questions. What's my limit for the first round, Mayor?
Well, why don't you just start with, yeah, let's, let's, let's give you five minutes, you know, and then move on, and then we can do another round. The study session is just for this topic.
Right, right. So, Matt, can you share with us what your average vacancy rate is and how long your waiting list is?
We have zero vacancies, and our waiting list is stretches for, you know, we don't, we don't take as long a waiting list as we probably could. We could stretch it out for upwards of a year, probably, as I understand it, but it doesn't become practical, because you don't know, many of the people are there so long and you have so, so little turnover.
Okay, and speaking of that, what's the average length of residency?
Over five years.
Over five years? Would you be willing to share your, your policies in terms of evictions? The application or what the rules are for folks to be admitted into there, like how long, how old can their RV be for them to be admitted?
So typically, with all of these questions that you ask, they, they comprise, they're comprised of state law. Applications are 100% according to state law, which are a lot different than single-family homes. For example, roughly speaking, if you've been convicted, they're all, other than not meeting the three times income threshold, which is a general guideline, which would put somebody at 30% AMI roughly, you need to have been convicted of dealing drugs in a park previously to be denied, or I think the other one, if it's still there, is engaging in prostitution in a previous park and being convicted. There are very few things that, the state law is very specific on the criteria. Generally, we're not looking at age on a home. We're looking that it just has a good aesthetic quality. A good aesthetic quality, by the way, you can buy nice-looking RVs that we see come in all the time for $5,000 to $10,000. So we're not looking at $100,000 rigs. We're looking at trailers and RVs that are modest, but they, they look good. I'd say the average value is about $20,000.
Okay, um, I drove through there a few times, I have, and again today, and I did notice that they are, there's a lot of nice-looking, well-kept RVs, and I saw the tiny homes. And I'm, so I'm wondering, what is the, what is the eviction policy? Like, what do people do to get kicked out of there? How, is there a rubric for determining if their, if their RV is no longer acceptable or aesthetically pleasing? Like, what, what's used to determine that, for somebody to be asked to leave?
After nine months, they, and they enjoy many more protections under the Civil Code, and generally, we can only evict somebody for, and I'll let Chris state to this if I'm wrong, but approximately five causes of action, and those are related to non-payment, persistent rules violation, health and safety, serious health and safety violations. You, we're not in a position to where we can just even ask these people to leave. I don't know how, since they've been there that long, the state law says that they are permitted to basically stay as long as they want. So I don't even know how an eviction would go, because it would be contrary to state law if we had to get these people out. We can't just ask somebody to leave. And if we go through, we can't just evict them, because we say, "You've been here long enough, or we don't like you here anymore, or, you know, we don't like how you looked at us. You need to leave." No, we, we have no say in that.
Okay, and then Rebecca, I need to move on now, okay? And then we'll go through another round. We have public comments, too. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, hold, Councilmember Barco?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Has staff been out there and inspected these things?
Yeah, so we've had code enforcement out there, and I did show some photos of some of the tiny homes that are out there. One of the questions is, is, are these RVs on a foundation? So that's a question that we need answers to.
But now, how does staff look at this? Because I went out there, and these are not RVs. They're mobile homes. I transport these things down the road, and they need a permit to be driven, to be towed down the road. So that would put them in a totally different category. I know they would have to be secured to their foundations and all that stuff. So how are we looking at this?
Is that a question for, okay, sorry. Cindy, are you, are you looking to Cindy to answer that, Dion?
Yes.
Andy, can you weigh in here?
Well, I think the applicant perhaps can, but my, our understanding, Councilmember Barco, is that the, the, the vehicles, certainly the tiny homes that Mr. Davis talked about, they have told us are considered park trailers. And in the memo, we, we explain what park trailers are. They are, they are in the category of RVs by state law. It's one of the things that is called an RV. And a park trailer has to contain 400 square feet or less of gross floor area, be no more than 14 feet wide, built on a single chassis, but needs a permit to be transported on highways, because the smaller RVs do not. And like other RVs, they cannot be permanently attached to a foundation. But the applicant has told us that they are, that that is the category that they understand the tiny homes to be in.
Okay, and for the applicant, when did you purchase the park?
December.
And have you increased the rent since then?
Yes.
And how much did you increase it?
Typically, $50 to $75.
And is there more increases coming up?
Not this year.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, before I just go to you, I want to ask just one question of clarification on Dion Barco's question. Does that mean that the, the home, the tiny homes that are there right now are on a chassis?
So.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
And they're not permanently affixed to the ground, and they are, we're, again, our license to operate is through Housing Community Development. The state oversees us, and we have these, we have these in about 10 parks. These are, these are RVs, for lack of a better term. That's what they call them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marks.
Yes, Matt, I have a few questions for you. When your tiny house, houses, if they're on a chassis, then do they have wheels also?
Yes, they do.
Where are they? Because I have been out there also, and I don't see the wheels. It looks like an actual house. Cindy, can you bring up that slide again of the exterior, I mean, please bring it up, and of the exterior of this tiny house? Because I would like to have the wheels pointed out to me. Okay, right there, Matt, where are the wheels?
Under the home.
Okay, so where the dark paneling in, at the bottom is covering the wheels?
Correct, the skirting.
And can someone self-drive this? Like a motorhome? I mean, does it have a steering wheel? Yeah, a motor?
It has a hitch.
So it has to be towed?
Correct.
Now, this is pretty large, so a reg, a pickup truck could not tow this. Like, it can tow other trailers. You would have to have a regular professional company move this, correct?
You can tow them with a duly.
Okay, but most people probably don't have a duly.
A lot of people don't have big trucks. That's correct.
Okay, so they would, this, these would be very difficult to move. Now, in reading your article in the Dispatch and the Mercury, you're going to sell these for $89,950, correct?
Correct.
So if I was going to buy one and live there at your park, I would assume this is going to be a permanent residence, because I would not pay $90,000 for a home that I was going to move in 120 days, or even a home that I was going to move in a year or two, correct?
People pay over six figures for RVs.
That's not answering my question.
I don't understand your question, then I apologize.
My question is, this is going to be more of a permanent tiny home community. In looking at your website and seeing what you've developed elsewhere, they look very nice, but I wouldn't call these RVs, because in my mind, an RV. But I wouldn't call these RVs, because in my mind, an RV is movable, where people come stay for a while and move. And you're absolutely correct. I talked to many residents out there, someone to get their feel for what's happening. And many of them have been there five to eleven years. And they, yes, they are extremely low income. I am very concerned for the people who are there right now, because they told me they cannot afford a tiny home. And they're very concerned about being addicted, because how many times have you raised their park space rent since December?
Once.
Twice.
No.
That's what they told me.
No.
And then, and then I believe they got a contract that said, over the next five years, the rent space is going up between three and eight percent until you get it up to nine hundred and seventy-five dollars a space.
Incorrect.
Hmm, they, I have a contract.
Everybody's, most everybody's already at nine seventy-five. So that wouldn't make sense.
So you're going to get the rest of them up there? But no, they have contracts that say these numbers.
I can tell you that ninety percent of the park is at nine hundred and seventy-five dollars or higher. Move-in rents are a thousand and fifty. So I, I don't understand that. We've done one rent increase and we took over, it was effective around February or March. And the other thing is, we had a big meeting and nobody's, I could, if I wanted to get rid of people, I wouldn't. And I don't want to get rid of people. That would be the antithesis of what we do. We're not in, we're not in the business of displacing people. These park models come in as vacancies come up.
Okay, all right, I have, um, let's see, I have another question.
Okay, almost at your five minutes.
Okay, when you talk about affordable housing, I understand your argument, if it was a bare piece of land. But there are people who live there that have lived there for a long time and they are extremely low income. I have a really bad feeling that those people are going to be pushed out so you can bring in your tiny homes to sell. I'm really worried about that.
Okay, well, let me walk you through what the, the business plan, so I can set your mind at ease.
Good, thank you.
A tiny home community creates more stability in the community. Again, these are coming in as residents are moving out. As residents come and they go. There is, i- if everybody's staying there and there's no volatility in the vacancy, I don't care if it's a park model or if it's an RV. What I care about is stability in our cash flow stream and having people that stay and that we don't have ups and downs. So if everybody is staying there, great, it doesn't matter if it's an RV or a park model.
Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you, Councilmember LaRoma Yose.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Matt, just a couple of quick questions. The first one, I, I, I think I get, but I want to make sure that I'm a hundred percent correct. Um, because I think it's a, it's a critical thing for me and, and for others as we consider this. With regard to running the, the RV park, a- and I think you mentioned earlier on that it is not your goal to create or establish permanent housing there, but rather to create this, uh, to run this RV park. Given the fact that the average stay of people in, in other RV parks that you've worked with exceeds five years and given the state law, um, makes it very difficult to, uh, evict people past a certain point, um, I just want to make sure that I get this completely right, that it is possible hypothetically that people could be there for an indefinite duration of time, is that correct?
I have people in other RV parks that have lived there thirty-five years when we've taken them over. Again, the state doesn't have a mechanism for all of these people that are here. And it's not, I want to clarify something else, these tiny homes aren't all coming in overnight. I mean, this is probably a five-year thing. And, and again, it's, it's stability and it's upgrades.
And with regard to the upgrades, it's actually a good segue to my next question. Uh, given the more permanent nature of the residences that would be there, are, are you looking in any way to, uh, to get supporting infrastructure or upgrades from the city for the residences? Uh, so upgrades from the existing infrastructure that's already there?
There are no needed upgrades. The infrastructure already supports it. We're not changing the footprint, we're not changing the sizes. We're running within the same footprint, the same use. There, the infrastructure already supports what's there. There, that was built for this use.
Great, that's all that I have at this point, thank you, Matt.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions before we continue on. Um, I, and possibly Rebecca asked this earlier, but did you say that there's no vacancy right now?
We might have one space. I'm going to say less than point five percent vacancy, it can change. But I don't, I think, uh, last I saw, last week, we had zero vacancies.
Okay, well, so if that's the case, how, how are these tiny homes, tiny homes would displace an existing RV then, correct?
No. When they move out, there's a vacancy. Since we've taken over, we've had about, I think there are about four out there. So we've had one move out. I mean, if you do the math, if somebody stays five years, that would be, that would be what's, let me, how many people, that average person stays sixty months? That would mean we're having, if it's five years, one-fifth moves out, we're having thirty people move out, that's two people a month. So when these become, when they move, the space is open and a tiny home goes in, so nobody's displaced.
Okay.
People just like, you, just like you sell your house and you move and when somebody, somebody's living situation changes, they take a new job somewhere else.
Okay, I think I might have been understanding you to, I might have been understanding a larger percentage of people who don't move, who stay there and, and don't leave. So I, I, so it must be a smaller percentage of people that have been there for these very lengthy periods of time, is that correct?
No, the average stay is five years.
Okay.
There's a hundred and sixty people there. So if the average stay is five years and you cycle through everybody in five years, I'm giving you rough numbers, we might only have ten vacancies come up in a year, which would imply an average stay of closer to fifteen years.
Okay, and if you're filling, if, if each time something becomes vacant, you're filling it with a tiny home, then you eventually are going to have fewer spaces available for people to drive on in with an RV that, I mean, there's, I, I realize people can spend, you know, as much as a hundred thousand dollars on an RV, but they can also spend forty thousand dollars on an RV, you know, and get used RVs. So the more tiny homes you put there, the fewer, the fewer RVs that this could, the, the less this becomes an RV park for traditional RVs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the, the tiny homes, you're saying, are just another form of RV? Because even though people have to buy them, right, they, they will own them, it's just like they own their RV. Uh, the only difference is you are the one selling them, right?
Yeah, they could buy them, or they could buy a park model from somebody else and they could bring it in.
They could bring a tiny home onto your, oh, so these, it's not necessarily that they have to purchase from you?
No, there's not, the, the, it's not, the, the, the tiny homes are not a profit, uh, I mean, there's a little bit of profit, they're not considered a profit center.
Thank you.
The whole, the whole scope is not to sell tiny homes and make money, it's to upgrade the community and make it more stable.
Okay, and with, with, right now, people who are there are paying space rent. You just said it's nine hundred and seventy-five a month, new, new people coming in a thousand and fifty, right? That's the income. Um, is there anything like homeowners dues or things of that nature that, that add to the monthly cost for the people who are, who are there while they're there?
Your electricity.
Just utilities?
Correct.
Okay, so there's, there, there's, there's no additional charge for using the pool, for using the clubhouse, that sort of thing?
No, those are included amenities. And just another point of clarification, the people buying these homes, a family of four can qualify if their income is around fifty thousand dollars a year and your payment is about, uh, uh, rough, rough numbers, about seven hundred dollars a month. So a family can live in one of these out the door for about seventeen hundred dollars a month, until their loan is paid off and then they go back to their space rent.
All right, and title to the tiny home goes to the, the inhabitant, right? They, they purchase it, they have title.
Correct, a pink slip, just like DMV.
Right, okay. All right, um, council, it's, it's twenty minutes to seven. I would like to make sure we get to public comment, not later than seven. So I'll go ahead and we'll do Rebecca, Dion and Carol again, as long as that can be done, you know, like the fifteen minutes, so that the public has a chance to weigh in before we continue our own discussion, is that all right? Okay, so Rebecca, go ahead.
I, I just have one question right now, no, two. So does, um, HCD regulate, uh, the number of rent increases or the amount of rent that can be increased? You're on mute, Matt.
HCD regulates the park. They regulate the operations of the park, they regulate the infrastructure. They regulate basically, if I'm going to sum it up, the quality of life. The state, the Calipari State Legislature legislates the rents.
Um, but there's no specific rent, uh, control or rent stabilization for, uh, RV parks?
Correct.
Okay, and then, um, is there rent, is there assistance for folks who, or could assistance be provided for folks who, um, want to transition from their own RV to one of the tiny homes?
Um, we have a few. I should also state, just so you know, we did, um, COVID changed things a little bit more, we had some people now that the economy's been opening up, um, we've had a hit, I understand a hit more turnover than historical. So, uh, Mayor Blankley was asking about RVs and coming in. We've actually brought in about eight of those RVs as well, that people have brought in. So we're not saying no to new RVs moving in and that's a slow pace. And going back to that, a few of the residents have, uh, inquired about it and I understand a few of them are working on it with the, with the lender.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Bracco?
Um, I think Rebecca asked the question I wanted to ask, but I want to go a little bit further. The, does your company, um, try to keep some of the residents that are there now by helping them to get into one of these things? With special financing or anything like that?
I wouldn't. Uh, that's a mixed bag. Um, I wouldn't say that we have, I mean, we don't give them subsidies for financing. We work with them, we hold their hands. Uh, we understand that we're dealing with a demographic that's not as affluent or, or literate with finances. Uh, that's something that we typically deal with. Um, the, the biggest lender, for example, in the source is actually Warren Buffett. So we have, you know, three different points of contact, uh, different languages and we help hold their hands, help explain the paperwork requests. But, you know, that sort of, it's out, that financing component is outside of us. We don't really, we don't, we're not lenders.
Okay, that, that, that answered my question. One more question. Um, I was out there today and, um, are, are you going to deal with the parking issues out there? There's a lot, lot of cars, uh, blocking the road, roadway and stuff.
That's been something that's been going on for about ten years. We are trying to rework as the spaces come in, rework the parking, push things back so that we create more parking. Um, remember, you're dealing with, again, a lot of people that are one step away, you know, from homelessness or they're, the, the, the thing, for many of these people, it's, is my RV going to park in this park where it's safe and clean and neat? Or am I parking along the side of the side of a highway or the side of a street? And, uh, we get multi-generational families, you get people that pack in there. You're dealing with, you know, people in need. Um, so there are more cars, it's, it's an issue. You, you're dealing with multiple workers that are going to different areas. You can have three or four cars. We, we police the car, the parking situation vigorously. But I mean, there's only so much we can do before we turn into the bad people that are towing people's cars and they're having to pay five hundred bucks to get them out of impound, which to me is equally criminal.
Okay, Councilmember Marx?
Matt, there's not a doubt in my mind that what you want to put in would look very, very nice there. Um, what my concern is, are, I don't think your numbers pencil out, because if you're waiting for just two RVs to leave a year so you can move in tiny homes, that is a long, long time, especially when you want to put in a hundred tiny homes. And my big fear is that in order to get this project to pencil out, you're going to keep raising your space rent until the people that are living there just throw up their hands and say, we can't do this anymore. For me to give a thumbs up to anything tonight with this project, I would like to have some type of a commitment from you in front of all of us that you would not be raising those space rents on the people who are there. Or if you do a very low, low amount, because I have, I have to sympathize with the people there. They're frightened right now that they're going to be homeless. And even though we move in new people into these tiny homes, and yes, it looks good for the affordable housing, we are now making, we could be making a hundred families homeless at the same time. See what I mean?
I, I think you're miss, I think there's some concern about our business model. Again, the tiny homes, I don't, if, as a vacancy comes up, as it does, if the only, and if you do the math, this is probably for a hundred homes, it's a five or six-year project is what we're thinking. If the average stay is eight years, that would mean that we would be turning over twenty spaces a year out of a hundred and sixty. So that's an eight-year turn. We're not, we're not go, we don't have, you, I think we have five more homes on order that come out over the next five months. We're pla, we have about one coming out a month. Um, we're not doing that. I mean, as far as rent increases, we're an unsubsidized affordable housing provider. We don't take subsidies from anybody. We are in a market rate business, whether they are RVs, whether they are park models, we're going to charge a fair, just market rate. The market rate, uh, as it stands around now is in, is between a thousand and eleven hundred. We didn't take everybody there overnight. We believe in keeping our rent increases fair. We don't believe in shocking the system. Anything that I heard about this five-year plan, I can show you the new hi, the new pa, paperwork that was sent out to all the residents. I can tell you from the meeting that they were specifically told they're not going anywhere. And, and if I'm lying to you guys and my evil motive is to kick them all out, I, again, I can't even get them out if I wanted pursuant to state law. And you're, and to, the idea that I economically evict somebody in this time, in this day, I can guarantee you that's not the case. My head would be up on a pike, I wouldn't be in this business. So I, am I going to make any promises about rent increases? Yeah, I'm going to tell you that they're going to be fair, they're going to be reasonable. The rent will go up once a year, as it should, no more, no less. We're not going to be pushing rents above market. If the market is a thousand, eleven hundred dollars, we're not taking rents to thirteen or fourteen hundred dollars. We're not pushing above-market rents. I don't care, if, if I don't need to put any tiny homes in, great. Again, it's, it makes it, I need, it's stability, if we're talking pure business, it's stability of the cash flows. And that's all we're trying to do and as they come out, we're trying to make sure that we're stable. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
I just have one quick question. So if I were to purchase my own tiny home, I pay it off and I decide to move, can, do I have the right to sell it to another family?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you take no cut of that sale or anything?
It's ju, just like a manufactured housing community. It's governed in a lot of the, remember the state governs, they govern, uh, mobile home parks under the MPA. They govern RV parks under SOPA and both of those two are very much intertwined. So it's not like the Wild West, anything you guys know, you folks know about mobile homes, pretty much applies on the RV side.
All right, thank you.
Okay, they would either sell it or take it with them, right? If they're leaving, either two. Okay, uh, I have a question of, I think this will be for staff, not for the applicant, and then I am going to go to public comment. And that is, um, you know, we do have a conditional use permit. The fact that we've been allowing, uh, you know, not, not enforcing it is a, a, a question. Okay, we haven't been enforcing it, but is there, I, I have two questions for staff, because if, does state law somehow prevent us from enforcing our own CUP?
Andy, you want to take this?
I'll, I'll answer that. In a general sense, no, it's a, this is a very strange part of state law. And I think, uh, Matt and, uh, Chris Chapman alluded to it. There is, the, the HCD runs a special, uh, a statute called Special Acquiescence Vehicle Statute, the park statute. So he called it SOPA, that's the one I talked about in the, in the memorandum. And so the actual operations of the park are actually under the control of HCD, which is very strange. And in fact, staff contacted HCD to ask about whether things were on foundations and they, they said, well, we're not going to check that. HCD has kind of a built-in conflict, if you think about it. Because if we went to HCD and said, we would like you to enforce conditions in our park that, for example, our length of stay requirement. HCD is all about affordable housing. That's their mission of life. So it's a strange situation, and the city's control is really more at this point with this, with these laws now. The city's control is really about where an RV park would be and whether we have one or not. For example, we don't have to, we have no new ones. We changed zoning.
Okay.
If this one went out of business, we don't have to replace it with another RV park.
Okay.
The city, the city still has that control. But in terms of the operation and maintenance and code compliance in general sense for the park, it's really the state that's in control. It's very, it's very peculiar and hard to explain.
Yeah, because if it's not something that's short term, you know, if it's not short term, if these long term stays have been happening or can continue to happen, then how, how is the city getting competence? I mean, we, we still are providing all of our city services. I mean, our police and our fire are still going out there. How are schools being being affected when when children are coming in? Where, where this, it, it, if it's not for, if not for the CUP, it is a housing development. I mean, that's what it is, especially if it's not a time, length of stay limited. So.
It's a peculiar situation, and we are, we are as a planning thing, as I say at the end of the memo, looking at this not as a residential use under the general plan because we're not saying we have to change the policy. But it is obviously housing. And so that's a strange distinction to draw between residential and housing. But we're drawing that in a planning sense and saying that rather if the city agrees to exempt them from the length of stay, it is a, it is a use permitted in a special occupancy park by the state. So it is an RV park use. And it is akin to housing. And in fact, it obviously fulfills some form of low or very low income housing need. There's no, no question about that. So that's, that's essentially how we are looking at it.
Right, I I'm just, here's where I'm still not understanding is that this, for this exemption to apply, there's a, there needs to be a problem that some, there's some problem that not having the exemption is causing.
Well, I hear what I think is.
What is that problem?
I, that's one of the questions I suggested asking the applicant. I think the problem probably is the fact that there are existing people who have been living there, and if they were subject to the length of stay requirements would be, would have to leave. Now, the state law says we must grant the exemption unless we make certain findings. And the findings, the statute is messy. I mean, you know, I quoted the whole thing so you could see it for yourself. It's, I hate statutes like this where you're trying to figure out what is it possibly supposed to mean? The two issues that they talk about for findings, though, in the statute, one is the need for overnight or tourist spaces. So to the extent that there is a legitimate need for transient people. And the second is the effect on the school district. Those are the only two factors that are really mentioned in the state statute. It may be that there could be others if we found there was gonna be some serious harm based on substantial evidence that would have to be in the record, but those are the only two that are mentioned. So I guess the problem the applicant is trying to solve, obviously he has a business he's in and he's trying to support his business. But if I were to say what is the problem, I think the problem would be that there are many long term residents. And arguably, it is in the public interest to allow them to continue as long term occupants of the park. I think that would probably be the problem.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go to public comment and then council, I'll come back to council member for questions. So Christina, can you let me know if there is anybody from the public who would like to speak on this issue?
Yes, we have Jan Bernstein. She has her hand raised. I'm gonna allow her to talk now.
Okay, now we have a three minute limit. Jan, you know that. So I don't know if anybody's timing it. So I hope people will time themselves. I don't want to have to cut you off. So, okay, Jan, go ahead.
Here I go. Quickly, I want to just thank the mayor and Councilmember Marks and Councilmember Armand Darius for pointing out, we do not want to make additional people homeless through this. And that is my real fear. This is one of, this is really the only, as Matt mentioned, the only non-subsidized low income housing there is. And if we lose those spaces, we lose the only option for a lot of families. You mentioned there's a waiting list. If a space becomes vacant, will you take somebody off the waiting list if they have their own RV, not a tiny home? Or do they have to purchase a tiny home? You know, I unders, I hear the word upgrade and I I get fear that we mean gentrifying, that we mean getting, getting rid of the lowest income people. And yes, the, the, the $50,000 a year people also need housing, but I would much prefer to see that in a new place, not replacing the extremely low income people who work at Christopher Ranch and are currently able to afford to live because they own their RVs and are only paying space rent and might not make it if they had to purchase a tiny home. I worry, I worry about credit checks in order to be able to finance the tiny home. Not everybody will be able to do that. Some who are able to pay cash for the RV, for the used RV that they own outright would not be able to get into a financing agreement. I'm very concerned about the people there and the people behind them on the waiting list. I'm very concerned about our extremely low income residents for whom this is the only option that does not require a subsidy or a housing voucher. So council, thank you very much for your, for your concern on this. We, we, we do not want to see hundreds more families on the streets.
All right, thank you. Next, next speaker, Christina, Christine, Christina.
If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Seeing none.
Oh, okay. Then Councilmember Armand Darius, your question.
Sure, um, I know Andy, Andy mentioned a couple of issues, one being the impact on our school district. And I'm just thinking back to our meeting with the school district and how enrollment is waning. So what would be another issue or another impact on the school district that we would take into consideration? Transportation? That's a question for Andy.
Oh, I think the state is, in the statute is primarily talking about enrollment issues. However, there could be public safety issues that are concerned. For example, this is not in a normal residential neighborhood with normal residential sidewalks and parks and so on. It's in a different area. Now, it's been in operation, as they say, for a number of years. I'm not, I don't know if there have been safety issues or not. I think public safety issues like that could be considered. I'm not sure how you would weigh them or what the evidence would be, but that's certainly legitimate. Although, as I say, I think the statute was mainly addressed at enrollment issues, I think.
Right. And then so folks, folks who are transitory, and I know Matt mentioned that the neighboring RV park reserves a certain percentage of vacancies for folks who are just coming through, right, X number of of days or hours. How does the city collect, is there a TOT tax? Like, how do we collect for for folks who are visiting? Because I know a lot of tourists, a lot of visitors also have an impact on our city resources, right? They can need police or fire, paramedic, just like anybody else. So I'm wondering how, how we collect from our tourists and visitors in those instances.
I'm not sure who that question is addressed to.
Yeah, maybe Cindy?
Maybe hard job.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hi there. This is Hujat Sangat, City of Gilroy Finance Director. I can certainly speak to the TOT components. The RV parks are self-registered and they self-report. So based on any occupancies that are 30 days or less, they are required to collect the TOT, reported back to us.
Okay, thank you.
So they function just like a hotel then in that regard?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Bracco and then Councilmember Marks and then Councilmember La Romano.
Yes, um, how, how would this affect our numbers for low income housing? Does anybody know?
I believe staff has looked into that a little bit. I'm not sure what they concluded.
Yeah, it would be, I don't actually have an answer. In order to count this as affordable housing, there's kind of a, two ways you can do that. One, to have it deed restricted, which we know is not the case as it is today. And two is to have it as non-deed restricted or non-subsidized as the Jan mentioned on the public comments. So in order to count these as affordable housing, we would need to report when they are permitted. And so that, that's one issue. And then we would need to show rent roll in terms of the cost of the house and the rents that are being charged in order to see what income category they could potentially fall under.
Okay, and I understand what Dan's talking about, but I don't, I, I don't think it's fair to put that up out on somebody else to tell this owner of this property, you have to provide these folks a place to live at lower rents. And I have a question for Matt. Is he still on? Matt, um, would you be opposed to us putting a, or a requirement where you can only raise the rent, say 10% a year or whatever negotiated amount they come to?
Generally, we're not in the rent control business. I'm not opposed to providing you folks some assurances and working with you on a reasonable solution at all. And without too many words, the bottom line is affordable housing is our mission. Again, I did not realize that this whole problem was related to park models. If there's demand and continues to be demand for RVs, we're gonna keep bringing them in and we're gonna keep bringing them in at the same rent. So I mean, our move in rent right now is posted on our website. It's for the big spaces, it's 1,095. For the small ones, it's 1025. We're not charging anybody more than the move in rent. We're charging market. I mean, rents aren't going up 10% a year. They're not going up 20% a year. We're probably not even taking 10% rent increases. I'd say on the max, we'd probably be taking, I mean, I think, you know, I think seven would be a stretch. I think we're probably in the range of four or five right now as we normalize things. And I think we'll find an equilibrium. Our whole goal is for an equilibrium. It's not to push rents. It's not to create a market. It's to have an equilibrium where we are full and we aren't turning things over.
And I don't, I don't think there's a problem with the park models. I've been out there. They're really beautiful models, much nicer than an RV. I think it's just an opportunity that we're getting to ask you some questions.
Fair enough. I, I, like I said, it's a family company. I'm gonna be your, I'm gonna be a business in your fam, in your city for the next 20 years. I'm not going anywhere. I mean, when we, when we come into a project, we don't leave it. We don't come in and quickly get out of it. I would say out of all of our projects in 20 years, we may be exited approximately three of them. We don't, we don't leave. We're here for the, we're here for as long a haul as, about as long a haul as you guys are gonna be here and as residents.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
Yes, this question's for Matt. I know we were talking about the exemption and Andy said, well, I think, you know, this is what he's asking for. Specifically, Matt, what is it that you want with the exemption?
To continue what's been going on for the last 15 years.
So in other words, not to have a limit on how long someone stays in the park?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Formalizing what is been the, been in practice. To give you two more tidbits, just to circle back. Um, the, remember, we talk about school districts and again, it's important to realize what's been going on for the last 10 or 15 years. We already have all the families in there are already going to your school district.
Right.
All of those families have already been getting those services. So, okay, perfect, because it's not like anything's gonna change and, you know, overnight. And we're doing the same thing. Okay.
Right. I think we're just realizing that there have been no impact fees collected for anything that's been happening. And so this would be an opportunity for us to correct that if that's the case.
And I have one question for Andy. I just want re clarification that if we approve the exemption and the tiny houses move in and people stay in them for a long period of time, that does not mean this is permanent housing and our general plan needs to be changed. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's, that's the position we're taking, yes.
Okay.
And the reason, the reason.
Andy, no one can, no one can come, no developer could come in and use this model as an example that we already set.
No, I don't think so because the difference is that assuming these are as represented by, by Matt Davis, they are on wheels. In a way, these are what mobile harms, mobile homes were 60 years ago. When mobile homes actually were on wheels and, and people could take them in and out. And gradually over the years, what happened is that mobile homes morphed into something bigger and permanent and became a form of housing. RVs have replaced that at the end of, with the structures that are still on wheels and still can be removed. And so presumably that is, that will continue to be the situation. When a developer comes in and wants to build regular housing, regular residential uses, they are subject to all of our building codes and all of our zoning requirements, which these people are not.
Okay, Matt, one last comment.
We, you talk, Mayor, you talk about impact fees, and I don't know if there's precedent for it, number one, but number two, our costs equate to our rents. So everything trickles down. So we, again, we try to keep things affordable. And if, if impact fees were to come into it, it would negatively impact our rental structure. So I want everybody to be aware of that. We try to keep costs down. We run thin margins so we can run affordable housing.
Understood. We just have a structure. If we go down a road that calls this affordable housing for our affordable housing numbers, as Councilmember Bracco asked, well, then all these other things come into play. So if we're trying to correct something that we've been doing, well, we're gonna correct it from both sides. You know, is all, is all I'm saying, wherever this is gonna go. Okay, Councilmember La Romano. What happened to him? Peter, we lost your picture and you're on mute. All right, I'm gonna go to Councilmember Armand Darius and then we'll come back to Peter. How about that?
Okay, is the, is this within the UGB or outside of it?
Within, I believe.
Yes, it's within the, actually within the city.
Thank you.
Okay, Peter, are you back? Oh, he's not back.
He's connecting and it looks like Peter's connecting on an alternate.
Okay, something happened there.
There we go. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Sorry about that. So this is actually a question in a different vein here. Chief Espinoza, kind of looking at this area and how it's currently policed, would there be any change, given the, the proposed kind of arrangement where it would become more of the permanent housing than kind of what we're seeing right now? Would there be any change to how we're policing it or any additional use of resources for the city in terms of that?
No, I mean, there, there, we would evaluate that on a calls for service type basis. And we could do that year to year to try to determine whether or not there's been an increase or significant resources that have been deployed to that particular area.
Okay, thank you. I think one of the things that I'm, I'm just trying to get a handle on here as we think through this with, of course, some of the issues around the affordability side and what that means for our numbers, but also just what the impacts might be to city, to city resources. So thank you for answering the question. That's all I have at this time.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I mean, if it's fully occupied, then those kinds of things are already there. The people are already living there. And so it's hard to, yeah, this is interesting, very interesting subject here. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, so Andy or Cindy, do you or Lee, anybody, do you have questions that you want to ask right now while we have the applicant here?
No, I think that I, from the legal. No, I think that I, from the legal standpoint, there are some strange things in the laws, I said, and I've told you some of them, but I don't think talking about them really makes much difference. I think the fact is that the applicant has made, made his, his case. The city has really has to grant the exemption unless we can make these deleterious findings of a deleterious effect. This is a study session, however, so the action of the council is not to take action tonight. It was to receive information. I think it's been very successful at doing that. And then give staff direction to perhaps bring this back to you in some direction, but you can't actually take it, you know, take formal action tonight.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Marks, did you have another question?
No, I just have a comment because I am very torn. And Matt, I really hope you, you know, take what the council has said tonight seriously about our concerns about the residents who live there. I do not want them outpriced for their spaces. And I'm very, very concerned that's going to happen in order to get them to move and you get to move in your tiny homes. We cannot afford to have any more people homeless because these people will have no place to go. They are, when you said how poor they are, some of them are exactly what you reported. And I really feel that this has been their livelihood. This has been their home for many, many years. I do not want to hear that there's a mass exodus because they can no longer afford their space rent. And I know that, I mean, I know economically it's really hard to pencil that out because you're here to make money, but those people and those children, those families, they need a house. They need a home. They need a place to stay. And some of them are barely hanging on. So I hope you have a heart and you consider that, okay? It's a rough dilemma on both your side.
It's not because we're, I hear you. It's not. We're, we're, we're doing what we're doing. We're not bringing in many. I'm telling you, the, the whole idea of the park models is really a red herring in terms of this. You put, you put out a splashy article because it sounds good. It's good for the marketing within the industry. It's this, we're maybe going to see, I don't know how many we're seeing. I don't even need to order that many as long as we're full. It's just to fill vacancies as people genuinely move on from place to place. I, I can give you my word. We're not economically evicting anybody. That's important to us as a family, to my father, my mother and my wife. That's important to us. We're not a faceless person. This is me. And by the way, cell phone, phone number, you want to meet with me, I will be out there. I, I'm accessible. I'm here. We can talk about this in six months, a year, two years. Any concerns that pop up with any resident? We're here. We're very responsive. We're not a typical company. Our, somebody answers our phone every minute, every day. We're there for people and we help them. It's important to us.
We're going to hold you to that. Thanks, Matt. Councilmember Bracco.
Andy, is this a fairly easy fix to just go change the CUP?
We don't, actually, we don't have to change the CUP. The state law talks about granting an exemption. So I think what we would do would be to have the council adopt a resolution formally granting that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, to the answer to your question, though, in terms of how complex this is, if this were viewed as a full-time residential use east of 101, we'd have to go amend the general plan with the planning commission that had to environmental impact study. I mean, it would really be an enormous project that would take several years. Viewed the way we're viewing it as a continuation of uses in a special occupancy vehicle park regulated by the state, the actual work the city has to do, to, to do this is very small.
Thank you.
But Andy, the exemption applies to a certain number of spaces, right? There still has to be some that the exemption does not apply to, or is that not true?
No, there does not have to be any. You can, you can give a full exemption, which I think is what's being requested. If you had evidence that there was a need for a continuation of transient occupancy spaces, you could give a partial exemption, but that has to be based on some evidence as to the need for the partial exemption.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Armandaris?
Thank you, Mayor. So I also feel like we're, or I felt like I was in a conundrum, like was stuck between risking that, that Harmony be a company that would come in and start displacing folks, right, or costing them out of this place and protecting the amount of RV spaces that we have available for folks who can't afford to live in a, in a permanent dwelling. And so I feel like tonight our questions have been answered. I'm satisfied with their, with the information they provided us, with their presence and with, and I feel like Matt is genuinely sincere about what he's saying. And he said it on record, right? You're on, at the city council meeting, you're on Facebook Live, right? Our communities are listening and watching. And so, and I feel like HCD, also it is committed to, to providing affordable housing. So, and in terms of my fellow council members, I appreciate their comments tonight, their questions, their concerns, including the mayor. So I want to ask us that if we, if we are genuinely concerned about our, our residents in RV parks, that we look into also changing our own policy because the last city council voted to no longer allow RV parks to be built in the city or to be permitted in the city. And so we see what, what kind of waiting lists they have. We see what kind of vacancy rates they have and what kind of demand there is. And we need to seriously look into changing that policy to allow for more RV parks to be, to be in our community. And we need to look into rent stabilization as well. I know that stings, Matt, but, but we need to look into those type of things to present, to protect our, our low-income and working-class communities. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Marks?
Okay, I'm, I'm getting a text from a citizen that wanted some questions answered. Are you aware there's a problem with the mail out there? And are, and how are you addressing it? Apparently the boxes were put in, but the post office is saying it's up to the park to deliver the mail. The park is saying that it's up to the post office to deliver?
So right now it's costing us about $30,000, $40,000 a year to be the mail delivery. The old owners put in new mailboxes. The old owners worked on getting those mailboxes in for a year. The post office required the city to provide an addressing letter, which the city did, but when the city provided the addressing letter, they said, while these people may be here long-term, we only allow transient 60 days. And so the post office, the postmaster Maximilian, I forget Max's last name, Max said, as soon as they don't tell me that and they say that we acknowledge that they're there and they're not transient, he will start delivering, he will put the mailboxes in. I mean, start delivering to the mailboxes. Those mailboxes have been sitting for the last nine, 12 months just waiting for, for this, for this to be resolved, it turns out.
So have they been getting, how, how have they been getting their mail?
They get their mail five days a week by coming to the office.
Oh, okay.
We hold, we hold specific hours just to act as the endpoint for mail.
And you'll have a, okay, and you'll have a 24/7 full-time manager, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good.
But we don't have mail 24/7. I mean, that would, you know, to have somebody on staff. And the other thing that came up, we've been, we, the old owners were sued because one of the tenants stated that they were purposely denying their mail. It wasn't the case, but it's caused issues with COVID and whatnot. We're saying it's not for us to deliver the mail. In fact, Cindy, if all the waiting need from, the max needs from you is just to revise, revise addressing list and not to state what your cup is. I mean, if we could just state the reality on the ground that, hey, maybe our cup says that they're supposed to be transient, but the reality on the ground is they're not. If that was just acknowledged to the post office, they would start utilizing those mailboxes.
Okay, we, we had this, we had a considerable discussion with Matt, I don't know, six weeks ago or something like that. We're, the city basically said, we don't have an objection to this. But then the post office said, well, what are, what are the restrictions? We have to say under the present CUP, this is the restriction. Obviously, if the council grants the exemption, that would change.
And we think they're, they're deserving of a full-time mail. I mean, the next step is would people have to pay for PO boxes and whatnot? Because we can't be there 12 hours a day, seven days a week at that cost. I mean, the cost to operate is just insane. And, and.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
We have this free service ready to go as soon as we resolve this and everybody gets their own box, their own key. And, you know, it works just like a community.
And what about your charter? What's happening with the internet service out there? That's a big one, huh?
I had to go to the CP, I emailed five of the members of the board on the CPUC. They got their head person involved and told Charter, you cannot shut down the internet service to these 75 people. We've been working on a solution and now DirecTV and Charter are looking to litigate. And, but right now it's all on. It's not going to go away. Charter knows they can't make it go away.
So when, do you have any idea when it'll be turned on or is it going to be after the litigation, which could drag on and on and on?
No, 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 they won't turn it off. We're in good shape. So we provide free Wi-Fi to everybody, a good Wi-Fi. I think a T, not more than a T1, some, some heavy Wi-Fi, but a lot of the residents, especially they were zooming with their kids, they needed hardwired, you know, hardwired Charter services. We have 75 of the residents that buy internet from Charter. And that is a cluster. But we're, but, put it this way, I put about 40 hours into that one. I continue to put hours each weekend and we're going to solve it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Armandaris?
That brings to mind the question, Matt, what, what process is there for tenants who have issue with the manager or with their internet? What's the, do they have a tenants' meeting or a complaint box? Like what, how are they, how do you receive and, and get feedback from the tenants?
Well, we do email, but more importantly, we have a phone number, like I said, in our Stockton office that's answered by somebody. And a gentleman named Mick Schaefer, who some of the staff are familiar with, is the off-site manager oversees that park. It's his job to make sure that everything there is run properly. And anybody can call into the office and get Mick on the phone if there's a problem. And Mick has, Mick is, works directly under me. He has no agenda. His agenda is to keep the park running smoothly. Just to give you an example, the biggest thing that we deal with are cleanup notices. And we get a lot of people saying, why are you picking on me? And like I always tell people, I don't drive home to where you live. I don't have to see what you're doing. It's the 150 other residents that have to see the things that you're doing. And we, we're doing things for the greater good. We're, we're, we're here for the best, for the best of the community and to solve problems. So Mick is there at all times. I mean, you know, not all times, you know, he's there during the week. He's very accessible. We're not, we go to a voicemail box, you don't get a call back. We're all about customer service. You can call into the office and get me on the phone most any day of the week, even if you weren't a council member. They'll screen my calls a little bit now, but they, you know, you can get ahold of us.
And you have bilingual staff as well?
We do. We have, it's, this is a tough one. There's litigation going around in California and we're trying to gently skirt this line where if we communicate, they are saying that that creates certain implied rights and that they can then sue us over and you need, where you'd have to provide hundreds of pages of documentation. We sort of skirt it. We have Joanne in our office who is incredibly bilingual and we have, oh, why can't, I can't, I'm so bad. I'm Carol in our office. So we do have two bilingual people. We dance around it a little bit so we don't get ourselves in a ringer, but we, again, we're in the customer service business. We're, if, if we're going to collect somebody's rent, we're going to give them a clean, safe, neat community. We pay attention to it. We follow up on it. It's our obligation as property managers and it's something we take very seriously.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't know that we want to, well, if we're done, that, that's fine. I don't need to say anything else. Felt like we were getting into the specific operations of, of their business. And anybody, of course, as Matt said, can call him anytime and get as much information as you want about the details of how they run their, run their business. We're here tonight to give staff some direction. Yes, thank you, on what, what, how we want staff to move forward, what we would like them, what information we'd like brought back to us in order to address this request. Okay, so I mean, with that, I would certainly start with, what I'd want to know is, how, how are you staff actually answering all the questions that you've, you know, posed in there? What, what, what do you, what will be your suggestion as to how we, how we go about this? I mean, that's what I would like to see come out.
Yes, well, let me take credit. My, my, I think most of our questions have been answered. For example, what impact will it be on the school district? There appears to be, whatever impact has been caused, has been caused apparently. And if this is an ongoing situation. Will the RVs placed on permanent foundations? They say no. We have to take them at their word. So I, I think that standing alone with the information tonight, I'm not sure that as staff, we have other particular questions. If the council feels, however, for example, with respect to the discussion we had a few minutes ago about whether there is a need for transient spaces, we haven't heard any evidence of that tonight. It may be that there is such evidence. It may be that somebody else, you know, Gilroy Gardens or someone else would say, yes, you know, we, we get visitors who come through or the Chamber of Commerce or, or Welcoming Center or anybody else. I don't know. I don't know if the council wants staff to try to obtain further information. If there isn't any, there isn't any. No, this is a public meeting. Nobody came to say anything about it. So right now we haven't heard, I would say we have not heard any evidence that would particularly point to anything other than granting the exemption that's requested. But the council may still have some questions about whether conditions should be put on it because of school issues or because of needs for transient occupancy.
Yeah, because we don't have any other alternative for, for transient occupancy, right? When it comes to RVs, this is our only.
RV park, apparently, yes. But you have the other RV park. And then the question here is, apparently as Matt has been saying, it doesn't sound as though there has been much of a, much of, much of an ability to have transients in this park either, if most residents are staying long-term.
If, we would make more money if there was demand for transient. Because you charge higher rates, you have, it's much more profitable. The part, the park owner years ago converted because of that lack of demand. I mean, if there was demand there, we, we'd be all over it frankly, as business people.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Armandaris, you have another question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, is exemption language, is it standard or is, is, would the language be written specific to this park?
Well, there would be a resolution adopted only for this park. It would not apply to the other park. Although if they came in and made a similar request and presented similar evidence, we might not be able to turn that down either. But the exemption would be solely for this park. And there could be conditions that apply to this park and not to the other park. Or vice versa.
Okay, well, I, I would, I mean, if, if we're, at some point, this is going to be on a, on a future agenda, I guess, when, when we're going to be passing a resolution or talking about a resolution. I would like to use this opportunity here to say, say to staff that the things I would want to make sure are clear to me are why this doesn't mean a general plan amendment, why this doesn't mean we need to, why we shouldn't worry that there will be permanent housing east of 101 somehow as, as a result of this, and how we are saying to any future property purchaser that they, they can't do this same thing.
Those are good questions. You're asking about what is the precedent? Does this set a precedent?
Yeah.
How is it limited? And that's something we have thought about at some great length. And we can, we can analyze that more fully and we can give you something in writing that explains our views as well.
Okay, well, those are the things I would be looking for.
It's a very legitimate question, of course, because you don't want to see that this is the next developer out to the east on what should be industrial land now says, wait a minute, I want housing.
Yeah, because even if maybe right now there aren't school impacts, for example, you know, in the future there might be. You know, birth rates change and then there is that. And then how are you, what if? What if Chief Espinoza finds that there is somehow an increase in in calls for service? You know, I don't know. And normally, when we have something that we're calling not temporary. We would, there would be some fees, some compensation that the city would get to cover some of those costs of service. And that's being circumvented here. And you could argue that it's because it's been circumvented for years. I get it, but it we're talking about going forward now with something that is not going to be. A short stay that is basically permanent housing, just smaller. So.
That was a good question. I think that's I think that that would be a good good thing for staff to dig into and we can do that before it comes back to the council.
Okay, so do any other council members have anything to chime in? If not, I want to thank Matt Davis and Chris Chapman both for being here. You guys really did a great job honestly explaining. I don't think there's anything that either of you said that has left a question in my mind. It's just a question for us and how to move forward. But I understand, I appreciate your willingness, your invitation for anybody to contact you if they need more information on their own. And with with that.
Thank you. And thank you, Cindy, for all your help thus far. It was appreciated.
Okay, great, Leanne.
Thank you, Mayor Blinkley. Just so that we're abundantly clear about what staff is bringing back to council. It's my understanding by what you've just said that you want staff to bring a report back to council. That answers these questions that you've you've raised this evening. Or any of the other questions that council members have raised through the study session tonight. So report back to council. Further than further discussion by council and then at some. After that discussion, council would then provide direction to staff about whether or not we're at a place where you're directing staff to bring back an exemption. Resolution to council for a decision. Is am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, I don't know that I personally said anything as to the timing, if if that's the best way to do the timing, those two steps. I am fine with that as opposed to it in one step. That would be a call for you to make. I'm fine with two steps.
Okay, we also presumably if the count the council appears from the comments to be in favor of this request. We could bring it back with a staff report that answers your questions. And allows that to be an action item that night too. In other words, one request, we could do that.
That's that's what I was getting at, if that's what the rest of the council would want to do, but if if staff feels like it would be more thorough or more clear to take it in two steps. That's what I was saying. I'm fine with two.
Sounds more efficient the way Andy just stated it.
I think I think we could do it in one step and then and then if that leaves some open ends, we can, you know, look at something again. That's.
Yes, I yes, I understand and.
And are you okay with that? Do you agree that that's okay?
Yes.
In one step, okay.
Yes, I think that's fine. And Andy and Cindy, maybe you can comment on what time does staff need? To pull this information together and be in a readiness position to bring it back to council? What would your what would an estimate of that be? Just so people's expectations can can be understood this evening.
I would think we could bring it back to the council in June. At one of the meetings in June, I would think it's, I think, if it doesn't turn out that way, we'll let you know, but I. I don't, it's not a huge amount of work. It's more thinking and analyzing than than, you know, going out and beating the bushes to get data.
Gotcha.
You're okay, Cindy, did I commit you to something you don't want to be committed to?
We're we're good.
The only thing I'll say with June is, you know, we both June meetings are going to be very heavy on the budget.
Okay.
So, you know, I I wonder if maybe. Either, I mean, if there's no problem with the applicant, why not do it the first meeting in August? Just because we don't meet in July, if that's okay with the applicant, we just, we're only going to have two meetings in June. And they're both the the budget talks are going to be all consuming, I think.
And we just have the one.
Certainly.
Only have the one meeting in July.
And we are.
July first.
Beginning of July. And then the staff is certainly not going to undertake any enforcement actions in the meantime.
No, so if I mean theoretically, it could go on the July first meeting because then all the budget stuff will be hashed out. So either July first or in August. If if.
It sounds like the major issue are things like the mail to the residents and that kind of thing. So the sooner the council makes that decision, then those. Impacts to the residents that are living there get resolved. So if staff is able to have that latitude for one of the two meetings in June or the first meeting in July. We can look at the overall, you know, what's on each of those agendas and see where it would best fit, then then we can work with that latitude.
All right. Sorry, but it's a big deal, so I want to make sure that's not. Yeah, okay. All right, is everybody all right? Okay, then. Thank you all and good night.
Thank you, Steph.
Bye.
Good night.